... eleventh. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Roth?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here. Here.
Here.
Here.
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, Rocky will come in and you can record the time, but he is here.
It's better than Madam Mayor.
We have one member of the public that came up here a few meetings ago and addressed me as Madam Mayor. Of course, we had Alice Norris here for eight years. I was hoping that's what triggered it. Anyway. First, start off with any future items that any of us want to put on to the study session docket?
Yeah, I've got one.
Okay.
I know that we've got an update coming on the Public Works. David advised me that today. I would like to put that on a monthly update to have it.
We can, I'll talk to the Public Works Director about putting that under my reports once a month. Would that be a good enough?
That'd be good.
Because there won't be a council action, probably.
Correct.
Should that be facilities in general or just Public Works, library?
Well, I think we're having regular discussions with you about the library.
Yeah.
And we've got some more information coming in executive session about it. But, yeah, we'll get that on there.
Thank you.
Any others? Of course, you can always put things on the study sessions out of our commission meetings, too. Generally, when you introduce new things, we try to take them into a study session first. The first item then, under discussion items, is the debriefing of Willamette Falls tour. The metro staff, two of the metro staff members and also Commissioner Carlotta Colet has agreed to stay over here while we discuss the tours. So, we'll write into that.
Thank you, Mayor. We put this item on the agenda because, given the boat tour of the Falls property, we thought it might be helpful for commissioners to be able to discuss in public sort of your reactions to the trip, what you saw, anything that surprised you, or particular things of interest that you think the public might want to know from your perspective. So, we wanted to give a little bit of time for that. And staff are welcome to anybody who was there. I think everybody in this room was on the trip. So, I'm just curious what your impressions were of what you saw today.
From my standpoint, I guess you kind of look at it in a different way than, I took tours up there before, but I wasn't looking at it the same way this time. And how you, first of all, I mentioned earlier that the southern section, you don't have the openings under the buildings and so forth that you do when you're further north on the system where the actual industry was based. And also, and I presume there was some fill occurring there at one point, but there's a lot of rock rubble under the mill that I wasn't aware of. It's not all scoured out like I thought it was from periods of times when I think the falls extended all the way under the mill site. I think the falls probably, because you could see areas where there apparently channels where the falls at one time flowed. And I guess I was surprised at the amount of rock rubble that was actually underneath the mill site. Those are things that struck me which might or might not be issues in terms of any kind of redevelopment, no matter who does it there.
I was struck by, you know, having seen the Blue Heron site from inside and outside, West Lynn looks worse.
We're not producing any more steam.
But it was true, it was very wonderful and amazing trip for me. I really did enjoy it. And just can imagine so many more things there if you're looking at it from, approaching it from the water level as approaching it from the street level.
And I think that's so key because I was hoping that this, much like the first few meetings that we held here in this room, we called them aspirational meetings, I think Commissioner Nocita and Mayor Neely came to a couple of those. We were simply trying to generate ideas. And I think that's what a tour like this can do. You know, for me, there were two major things. One was I'd never been to the locks before. And so, going into that channel, I don't know, I felt like I could be on the Mayflower or something. It just felt like a trip back in time to see the way the boards were worn. And then, the other thing that struck me was the amount of basalt and the large boulders and bedrock that you could see on the Oregon City side of the falls and all the moss and things growing on there. I just looked at that and thought about the Drycital firm that does these amazing water feature architecture around the world and what a candy store that would be for a creative firm to work on and how it would, how the natural feel of it, even though there was a lot of industry all around it, the nature was speaking to me pretty loudly because I think we were down on that water level. And it didn't, the industry part seemed less prominent somehow.
Hard rock candy.
Yeah. So, who else had an observation?
Well, I'll just use an observation that I've had in the past, too. But one of the things that we tend to forget, because we haven't had really that access for so long. But the Willamette River, obviously, was the first, well, a lot of people call it the first highway in the state of Oregon. You know, the entire city was built, you know, you look at the promenade and all the houses originally in Oregon City faced the river because there were, oh. We were talking during the break, so I turned my mic off. So, just the point of just being at the water level, which I think most of us have been various times in our history in the city, but just having the opportunity to remember the, not only the falls, but the Willamette River and its original use as transportation source for everything, which we've kind of forgotten. You know, we talk about it when we, when the locks comes up in discussions about how important that was. And I think that this gives us an opportunity, looking at the mill site in some ways in the future, to talk about things that we haven't really thought about. We, you know, had, you know, some amazing visionary ideas that, you know, many of us may not have agreed with, such as the tram and other various ways to access the falls. But, you know, you can access the falls the way the falls have always been accessed, which is along the river. And the fact that we never, you know, that people had never even considered that idea, you know, bringing that history back and we see, we talked about, you know, pointing out various boats that sit there unused. We've lost the Belle of the Falls in Oregon City. Now, we were excited that Portland Rose came to Oregon City, and now it's sitting there empty. Other vessels in this region that aren't being utilized from Portland. But when we talk about accessing the falls and accessing the, you know, above the falls, below the falls, the mill site itself and that history, it's got to be by boat. I mean, that's the way the city was created. And so, you know, seeing, you know, we've all talked about this, going to, I love going up to Victoria, B.C. You know, I could see at some point in the future, we have, you know, real focus on boat taxis between the two cities, between Oregon City and Portland, between all of these different things. And especially when we talk about the possibility of the National Heritage Area. So, I think that, you know, it just keeps reminding me the importance of that river and getting back to that history. Because I don't think, you know, you will ever get that same impact by driving into that site in a car or, you know, riding a tram across, nor do those, nor do those onto the site in any way. So, I, it's, you know, we've all been down there several times. I've been down there a ton of times. And every time you go down there, it just is kind of another reminder. It's almost like it's important, I think, for us to do that a couple of times a year to just remember what we tend to forget every time we drive down McLaughlin Boulevard and forget that it's sitting there. So, it's incredible and it's so exciting. And I don't think any of us, I've said this before, but we, none of us will ever see this opportunity to be able to do something amazing in this town like that, ever, in our lifetimes. So, it's very exciting.
Any other comments?
My comment would be, you're exactly correct. Being in the boat, looking up at the buildings, it seems to me like it was like an overwhelming opportunity, but still overwhelming to see all those buildings. And how are you going to get all this to work and, you know, take the buildings down, save the buildings? I don't know. It just is, it's just an amazing overwhelming opportunity. I felt very overwhelmed today. So, I wish you guys a lot of luck.
In terms of, one thing I noticed, I've seen it before and I've actually talked to West Lynn, Commissioner Jody Carson informed me something about it. But one of those mill sites, it looks like it's on the PGE property. It looks like it's built right onto the escarpment of the falls.
Yeah.
She was saying that it was actually a lumber mill and that there's actually equipment in it now. And, you know, looking at the potential tourist benefits, I think there's tremendous benefits on both sides of the falls because there's some, there's some great old structures on the West Lynn side. And we can make, in some manner or another, in association with the Blue Heron site, but in it, based on its own value, to look at some of those entities and work with the city of West Lynn and the PGE and see, you know, how we can expand those opportunities to include both Oregon City and West Lynn.
Great.
I had one other comment. I was, did they say when the locks were built?
I don't remember the exact date, 18.
January 71 or 73, I think.
Well, I was trying to figure out, why did they bring the rock from Carver?
I think it was, I think it was actually the quality of the basalt in terms of cutting it. Yeah, I think that Carver site produced basalt that could be, I don't want to say easily cut, but cut in a way that would work.
Well, the Carver site is now called Windswept Waters.
What is it?
So, that's kind of interesting.
And Mayor, we did invite the city manager and the mayor and commission council members from West Lynn on the boat tour, but I don't think they could get here.
The other thing Rocky just brought to mind is, you know, approaching this from the water, it would be fun to think about a water-powered elevator like we originally had. Going up to the main site.
Yeah. Interesting. But you know what happened with the original water-powered elevator, right? Time out.
Okay.
And that's technically a street, by the way.
So, anybody, you all, you got any of you here have any comments on the tour?
And unlike you, this was my first time on the river, below the dam. And so, for me, and I grew up in Duluth, Minnesota, which, overlooking industrial harbor. My father was a dredging scout captain. And I absolutely love water-based industrial sites. So, that's sort of the caveat. I'm just a total sucker for great industrial buildings on rivers. I just, and I love locks and I love dams. And being there on a boat, to me, that I just had this sense of how this whole area could feel if we kept a lot of the bones of the history and a lot of the buildings. I think the West Lynn side buildings in particular are a great opportunity. I mean, yeah, they need paint or something, but they're absolutely spectacular. And so, the view from Oregon City will be amazing. Even if, even if they stay as industrial and we just somehow manage to get them to tidy it up. But the sense of the power and the history and the, that this is like the heart of Oregon. When you're on the river, you really get that feeling. And I, there was a study done, I think in the late 1990s that I'll share with you of the capacity for ferry boat or river taxi in the whole region on the Willamette. And one of the conclusions of the study was it's probably not a good idea to try to do river taxi or commuter ferries for commuter use, but for tourism use or for the kinds of, if that, you know, a small boat that would go around in that area, just from building to building and site to site, that there's just tremendous potential there. I mean, I experienced the potential of being on the Blue Heron site in those old buildings. But when you're on the river and you're surrounded by it and you're dwarfed by the buildings and the power, it's amazing. It is a, it's an overwhelming opportunity. I think that's a perfect expression for it. The potential is huge and it's just really exciting. It's daunting. I mean, it's not going to be cheap by any means. But I think the opportunity is great. And I just hope that we can build whatever teams we need to build to be able to figure out what to do with it and do it right. That's a big piece of, a real key to it, is to figure out how do we, how do we give that part of our region and that part of, especially for you, how do we give it what it deserves to be its best? And that's going to take, boy, a lot of, a lot of people at the table, a lot of private money and probably some local money. But also, a lot of, I mean, as you, well, our staff have been saying, and you mentioned its name again, the water guy,
Drycital.
Drycital. He's doing the Zoo Master Plan with our, we have a team working on that. And my sense is that we will have designers just kind of competing. And I think a competition would be a great thing to do. If we get the site and if we can move forward, then actually having some kind of international competition for how, what do we do with this site?
Right.
You know, what's the best, I mean, I think the community will tell us what they want. And with some great architects and some great designers and engineers, we'll be able to get a sense of what that site can do, what it can feel like and look like. And I think it's just a tremendous, tremendous opportunity.
When I think about how daunting it is, I think about the first time I saw the Grand Canyon and somebody stood there once and said, maybe this should be a park.
Yes.
It's 11 miles wide and 210 miles long and they somehow found a way.
Yeah, but it didn't have a massive industrial site.
But it is daunting, but it's inspiring and exciting. And I'm glad we're all looking at it as a team.
You know, there could have been the potential that somebody before, years before, could have visualized a dam down below. And that didn't happen there.
It happened.
It happened higher up on the system. It didn't happen there.
Yeah. Anyway, thank you.
And I'll repeat, Metro's been a great partner with us in many activities here. And we really appreciate your contribution to Oregon City, both in terms of open spaces, in terms of the, some of the, actually several, we had several transportation funding contributions by the federal government, but through Metro that have helped us in a lot of our infrastructural work and so forth. They've been great partners.
Thank you.
I also appreciated the fact that you're one of four members of the Metro Council that actually attended this tour and demonstrating the great interest that your council has. So, thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, we're under discussion, item B. This is a resolution that we're not doing now, but we're discussing. Is that correct? To establish a policy regarding media in executive session staff. This kind of confused me a little bit because it's not an executive session. So, but somebody will explain that to me.
Okay. This actually was a policy that was developed a few years ago. And I don't know why or how it got put on the back burner, but it came to the attention of our city attorney a while ago. And he asked once again if we wanted to bring this forward. So, it's coming to you now, not because we've had requests from those in the community who are or are not members of the media, but just because we want to be proactive in bringing it forward in the event it would occur. So...
Could you put that on an action item so we could draw it up? But we're on A on the action item. If you bring it down to B.
I'm sorry. Oh, it is. Oh, I'm, there you go.
Thank you.
I apologize.
No problem. There's no problem now.
So, anyway, the resolution basically just describes the policy regarding media in executive sessions. And as you know, the current procedure is if someone is a member of the, an official member of the media, credentialed, that they're welcome in executive sessions. And that's statute-driven. The resolution is asking you if you want to add others, other members of the media to this. And because of our, the way our, the electronics are going and there's bloggers and people that have said that they are members of the media, and maybe they're not necessarily credentialed in yours or my eyes, but in their own, they are. You know, where do we draw the line? And so, if we have a policy in place, it would be easier to, yes, it will just be easier to take a stand that evening. So, if you have any questions, or I know on page two of the resolution, it's asking you if you want to add other media representatives other than the Oregonian or the Oregon City News to that list.
I'm assuming, well, I guess I shouldn't assume that, but Oregon City News, Clackamas Review. I mean, Clackamas Review probably should be mentioned separately. I know they're essentially the same, but I think we probably...
Okay.
I don't know. Do you ever want to invite TV stations or anything of that nature?
Did, I'm sorry?
TV station news media or not?
If they are credentialed, at this point in time, it's, they're allowed in our executive session that they can show that they are valid members of the media.
Any thoughts at this time? You'll have a little while to think about.
Yeah.
I have a question because this came up in the convention over in Bend, that Oregon is the only state that allows this.
I've never seen it before.
And I was just wondering, why?
Why, why does Oregon allow press into an executive session?
And why does no one else?
Well, I think it's a good thing that Oregon does. I mean, I really agree that, I mean, as far as the role of an honest press, at least, in holding a city government or any kind of government accountable. I think that's, that's a valuable, a valuable mechanism.
I just kind of, I just felt it kind of strange.
Well, I think, should we ever make a decision based on anything that comes out through this, one way or another, we'll know the background. And so, I think, I agree with Commissioner Nocita. I think, I think it's a valuable thing to have.
It's, the resolution is not saying that we won't allow any other media, but it gives a procedure for us to follow in the event that someone does show up and wants to come into executive session. So, on page two, under item four there, recognition of other entities, it goes through the procedure for how to go about allowing others in.
Any questions at this time? When we would be seeing this as an action item at the commission level, next time?
If you'd like to move it forward, then yes, we could just put it on a consent agenda if you don't have any further questions this evening.
Of course, you can always pull it out of the consent agenda.
Right.
If you see something, it's concerning.
Yep. It's pretty straightforward, so.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
And here we got another resolution apparently is being recommended to come before us.
Yes, this is another...
Are you a lead person again?
I am. I, it just fell into my office. So, I don't, I have little information and then others can help, Nancy and David as well. The city is looking at this resolution to establish immunity from certain personal injury or property damage in the unimproved rights-of-way of the city. It's a bill that was passed through the House. Earlier this summer, it was signed by the governor. And in order for smaller cities to adopt this immunity, it needs to be passed by resolution because it's automatic for cities that are 500,000 population or more. But smaller cities can adopt it by resolution. So, it's here for you to consider, let's see. It just provides limited liability for public use of unimproved rights-of-way for cities in Oregon, basically. Anyone have any more you can add to that, please?
I think this is primarily for if folks are using any unimproved rights-of-way for trails. And I think that's a really good idea for Oregon City because we have, the city was platted with a pretty complete street system, much of which cannot be constructed practically because of our topography. And not that people will be using some of those really steep areas, but the other thing is you want to, if there are rights-of-way out there and people do want to use them as trails, you want to encourage it, I think, in terms of healthy living and all that. And yet, if we spend the kind of money to improve them to where they're perfectly safe, or I'll use that term loosely, we probably wouldn't ever make them available if we have the liability. So, in this way, those areas can be available to the public, but we're not liable for, should there be difficulties or some of the risks that are involved with them.
I think I'm less sanguine about this one than the previous one. The, I mean, I would want some background research on, has this been a problem in the past?
Well, I think what triggered it is that in this summer, when the law passed, this came to our attention really through the city attorney's office, who said, well, there was something, I believe, on the city attorney listserv. And one of them said, well, you have recreational immunity on most of these properties anyway. But when this law changed, it allowed the cities to take advantage of this additional immunity provision if they adopted it by resolution. So, if you are interested enough and continuing to consider it, we'll have the city attorney attend the meeting where you're going to have it on your agenda. And then, if you have questions in advance about it, let us know. And of course, we can have him respond to those as well.
Yeah.
I think, I think we need a discussion about, if this comes before us, it shouldn't go on to the consent agenda. I think it should be discussed. The situation I can remember was that I had a group on one of the cleanup days that was working on what we call High School Creek in a very deep canyon area, directly east of John Adams Street. And we had approval from the property owners to work down in this area. And then, we came back out of it. And we came into kind of a right-of-way stub off of one of the streets that went right into this canyon that the city's not using for anything. And walked right by the doghouse that apparently one of the neighbors had put on. And I charged this big door and pincer and I thought, oh, man. Well, it jumped on us and was licking us to death. So, it wasn't, I was happy to have somebody to communicate with. But, you know, I don't know in those cases, you know, who's, should I have come up that side and I got bit by the dog?
Yeah.
Who's responsible? Is the city responsible, you know? Or is the property owner responsible?
If he's a dog owner.
Or the dog owner, I presume it is, but again, it's an area that...
If you twisted your ankle, then...
Yeah, it's an area that's not being developed in any way as a park or anything else by the city. It's just a kind of a stub that goes right into the canyon.
Yeah, and Nancy brought up another good point. I mean, you do have increasingly larger areas around your city where Metro and the city have purchased properties for, that are open space. And this Newell Creek Canyon is the first one I was exposed to about a year ago when John Lewis took me on tour and I couldn't, I was, wow, look at this. You know, it's pretty raw and it's pretty natural. And you probably want to keep it that way for many, many years. And having this extra immunity also invites people, you can come there, we own it now. You can come and the public can enjoy it. But, you know, there's some risk in that, some inherent risk in hiking around in there. And I don't think we want to discourage that. So, we think we should take advantage of any immunities that are out there for the city.
Some of those are responsible. I don't know if Metro has adopted this or not. They probably would want to if they haven't already.
That's a good question.
Well, their government entity probably covers a population larger than 500,000.
Probably about 1.5 million.
So, they're automatically, they're automatically covered.
Yes, they're automatically covered. Yes, they're automatically covered. But I, I, I agree with Commissioner to see, that any of this needs to be a discussion item, or have the opportunity of input from the city, city attorney, too, on this particular issue. He may know of issues that have arisen in smaller cities.
Any particular questions you have in advance for the city attorney? If you let us know those, we'll be sure and forward them.
Sure. Okay.
Do you have any that you can think of right now? Questions?
Yeah, I would want to delve more into this pre-existing recreational immunity, which is probably a common law immunity. And the balance I'm trying to strike right now, just on my first blush, you know, consideration of this is, what, for example, if we were held liable on something, what would, say, CIS and our, you know, our existing insurance cover? And is it better, just as a matter of justice, to rely on that, rather if someone, you know, becomes a quadriplegic and, and has no recourse? What's, what are the balances of equities there? You know, if we, if we, if we establish an immunity where that quadriplegic is totally screwed, you know, and, and lives a life of, of just, you know, can't get, you know, sufficient medical care or whatever. I mean, I'm talking worst-case scenarios, and I, I don't know how, whereas if we just didn't grant the immunity and we just relied on, you know, the existing insurance system where somebody could get compensated, those, these are really, really tough questions, and I, I don't want to just jump out there and, and, you know, do something that in the future we might regret.
Thanks a lot, I appreciate that.
With that, with the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, most of you know I went on a ride-along last weekend with the police department. I was supposed to go out for two hours, and I stayed out till almost 11 o'clock. Because we were, we were on, we were rolling and...
That's a late...
I had not, I had not been in patrol car for 18 years.
And you had to work the next?
So that was my, and technology has changed the police business quite a bit, but it was really fascinating to see in the amount of coverage. Well, I was talking to the sergeant, and this is a field sergeant who's out there on a regular basis with a shift every evening, and talking about the contrast in the service levels and the amount of assistance they had. They were what we call in that business, blacked out frequently. Call-to-call, no time for even a restroom break, many times per shift. And, you know, the criminal element knows this. I mean, they're tuned in to exactly what we're doing. And they were aware of it then, and they're also becoming fast aware of our extra coverage now. And so what's happening is, it's very common in law enforcement to hear this debate about reactive versus proactive. And many years ago, they started something called community policing, and they, there were a lot of cops grants that came out. You guys probably remember when community policing was, was born as a concept, it was, got a lot of media coverage. And all of that was stemmed around trying to get law enforcement to be more proactive. And so I'm so proud of our group and the changes that we've made, because right now we have essentially a squad that, that allows the regular calls for service to be answered at the same level we had before this overlap. But then when we went to the 410s, we essentially doubled the number of officers. So the second crew goes out and does these control buys for drugs. They do targeted enforcement from everything, from traffic to DWIs to surveillance. And in some sense, our police department, I think, is functioning so well that they're putting themselves out of business, and we want them to keep doing it. And they're not going to put themselves out of business, I think, because we want to continue to be safe, but the word is, I think the word is getting out, based on what I heard from the rank-and-file people, folks on the street. And it was just a great experience, and I was so proud of the way our, our people were, the demeanor and the professionalism of the department. I was, I was just really impressed by seeing that. So then the other thing is I've, this, I just finished my ICMA report on my education plan and all my reporting for the year, and I've been re-credentialed, so that's either here nor there, but I want you to know that that's something I do every year, and it's over and I'm good. And I don't have anything else unless staff does. Okay?
One last reminder, one last reminder that tomorrow, Thursday night is the landslide community forum.
And Water, and South Fork Water.
But you might get out early enough to come join us.
Yes. What time is the?
Seven to nine.
Seven to nine.
And if I, I do have one last thing. I want to credit this tour today. Kathy Ross gave me this idea. When we were at League of Oregon City, she mentioned kayak, and I mentioned that we were fearing for your safety in the kayaks. When we got close enough to the falls and felt, I felt the current, even in this 1,100-horsepower boat we were in, and I think that we might have been better off in the boat where we were, but we would not. And then I, and then I was so timid, I said to her, when she brought the idea to my attention, I said, well, do you, should we wait for nicer weather? And as a true Oregonian, she said, well, of course not, let's go now. And then I talked to Nancy Ide, and she made a phone call, and I mean, it just, it just came together. And so I really thank you, Nancy, for pulling it all together, and thank you, Kathy, for the recommendation.
With that, study sessions over.